Welcome to the Williamson County School Board meeting for April 20th. We're at the Professional Development Room this evening because of the COVID information. So, the first thing we need to do is record our attendance. So, Ms. Hagan, are you with us that you can call the roll?
Is Tim gonna unmute me?
You're unmuted.
I got it. Okay. Angela Durham?
I'm present.
Dan Cash? I know he's there. Elliot Mitchell?
Present.
Brad Fiskus?
Here.
Gary Anderson?
Here.
Jay Galbraith?
Present.
Sheila Cleveland?
Present.
Candy Emerson? Rick Wimberly?
Here.
Eric Welch? Where did he go?
Here.
Okay. Casey Hall?
Present.
And Nancy Garrett?
Here.
So, I have 11 present, one absent.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Jason Gold and I will lead the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, not his states of America, and to the republic which stands a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. I need to announce that the Williamson County School Board is meeting electronically because it is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. The next item is we do need to take a vote on this one, and it is Williamson County School Board meeting held pursuant to Executive Order Number 16, signed by Governor Bill Lee. So, do we have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I see none. Ms. Hagan, if you'd call the roll, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash? Dan?
He needs to unmute.
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emmert? I'm sorry, she's absent. Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 passes.
Thank you, Board. The next item is Item 2B, to waiver of Williamson County School Board policy 1.400, school board meetings and work sessions. We also need to vote on this to waive that 1.400 policy. Anyone like to make a motion for that?
I'll say "yes."
Second.
We have a motion. Ms. Garrett? And I'm sorry, who said "second"?
Sheila.
Sheila, okay. Any further discussion? All right. I see none. We'd go ahead and do the roll call vote again, Ms. Hagan, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11, zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is Item 3, Items of Particular Public Interest, Public Comment. Because of the unique situation that we have and how it's set up, we don't have a public comment time here, but as always, the board members are accessible through emails and any other phone calls or anything else that people would want to get in touch with us. And Mr. Gold, do you want to say something about that at this time?
Sure, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I've been gratified to see over the last month or so is our parents' engagement. We've had a lot of email engagement from our parents and phone calls, and so from a public comment perspective, I have a superintendent seeing a lot of suggestions and feedback from our parents that really cover the gamut of thought, and so I just wanted to appreciate the parents for sharing with us and asking to continue to do so.
Thank you, Jason. All right. The next item is approval of the agenda. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Like to second it?
Second.
Okay. I see Casey has, Mr. Hall has his hand raised? Yes, sir?
Just to second it.
He was seconding. Okay. Thank you. All right, then. Ms. Hagan, if you'd go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Board. Our next item is approval of the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion on our consent agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Anyone like to second it?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments on the consent agenda? Okay. I see none. If we go ahead then and have the roll call vote, please, Ms. Hagan.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you. With the approval of the consent agenda, we approved the March 30th school board meeting minutes. We approved board policies on second reading, 3.405 commercial advertising on Williamson County school buses, 3.604 public records requests, 4.302 field trips, and the 2020-2021 proposed classified pay chart. Next item is Communications to the Board. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to let you all know that, and really the public know, that we had a work session Thursday and had a lot of really good detailed discussions about where we are with COVID-19 and our instructional plan and some other issues. And because of that and because it's posted, I'm not going to go into that detail again to honor everyone's time. But I did want to talk a little bit about some of the things that have changed since then. As you know, and as so many folks know, it feels like, and it's almost 100% reality, that something changes every day with COVID-19. So, I wanted to give you some updates even since Thursday. Number one, we just heard that a few minutes ago, Governor Lee announced that he is lifting some of the restrictions on some public gatherings starting on May 1st. We don't have any details related to that yet, but the impression I have is that it's going to start with businesses and work its way from there. For us, we know that he also last week recommended that schools close for the remainder of the school year, so of course, we are honoring that. As part of that, we had a discussion on Thursday about what that meant for us, and really especially, we spent some time talking about the loss of so many of those events that we were hoping that we could do. The celebrations that students have, even TSSAA had held off on making a decision on spring sports, hoping that there was a possibility, and of course, high school graduation. And I mentioned to you that we were going to conduct a survey on Friday of our families, our seniors and the parents of our seniors related to high school graduation, and we discussed the possibility of putting an item on the agenda to extend the graduation window based on that survey. And those survey results were pretty impressive based on what our families thought. We had over 5,000 respondents, and that survey is actually still up. Over 5,000 respondents, about 2/3 of the respondents were parents, and about 1/3 of them, of course, were students. And 85% of the respondents asked that we try to find some way to have a physical graduation. And so, because of that, I have placed on the agenda for you to vote on our request that you extend the graduation window, and we'll talk about that when we get there. So, Dr. Webb, Dr. Lee Webb, and her staff have been working on this even before that announcement, working on possibilities. And we hope and believe that we'll be able to have some version of a physical graduation depending on what our health professionals tell us. I'm encouraged based on that little bit of information we have about Governor Lee's plan, starting on May 1st, to start what I think is a staged revamp and reboot of Tennessee and the economy, so that when we reach that time in July, that we'll have that opportunity to have a physical graduation. With that said, we did have some folks, of course, about 15% either wanted to just go ahead and have some virtual graduation now or some variation on that. Some of the issues brought to us included some graduates might move on to a college early. Another was military commitments. Some students have military commitments, and there were some other issues related to that. So, as part of that, Dr. Webb's staff is also working on finding ways to celebrate all those students regardless of whether they might be able to be at a high school graduation, a physical graduation later on. And I will tell you, we're planning on July, and we're likely looking at late July for a schedule so that we can stretch this out and give every opportunity for the health professionals who are serving us to make decisions related to those public gatherings. And if the public gathering restrictions continue, then we're going to talk about how we can honor those social distancing requirements and still have that physical graduation because it's obviously, obviously very important to our families. That's just not something you forget. I think we can all sit here and recall something about our high school graduation and tell stories about it. It's something that is extremely important, both to parents and students. I thought it was important for you all to know that and why that's on our agenda. I did want to also let you know about some items that we're still working on. We addressed this briefly at the work session, but our elementary schools are still working on producing more instructional content and delivery systems so that our teachers can have some additional interaction with our students. Those products and teacher planning will be brought next week so that we can have some additional instruction and assistance for students through that final month that school would have been in session had we not closed. Likewise, our secondary schools have been doing some video conferencing, and Dr. Webb has shared that so far, it's been going really well. I'm really impressed and proud of our staff for taking the time to plan, to see those successes and see those failures at other locations across the country so that we have a process in place that makes sure that our students can have that interaction and that protects them as well. And I'm encouraged that that's going to grow, and the volume of those interactions are going to grow as well as the quality of that as we progress. Likewise, elementary is working on the same thing, and I expect that as we spend these next few weeks finishing up, that the robustness of our content is going to continue, and we're going to have that additional interaction. A final part of that is other celebrations. It's not just about high school graduation. We have 5th graders matriculating up to middle school, 8th graders going up to high school, and we celebrate those students. We also have a lot of celebrations for fine arts, athletics, et cetera. So, many of our staff members are working on ways to celebrate students during these last few weeks of school. A number of those items will be virtual because of the window of time for some of those celebrations, but I thought it was very important for us to let families know that we recognize the importance of that. We recognize the importance of closing out our school year with love and with happiness, knowing that so many of those things are going to be different. And we hope and plan that in 15, 20, 30 years, many of our students are going to smile and remember that the celebration that they experienced, and they'll be able to tell family members down the road, "I graduated the year of COVID-19, and let me tell you how we did graduation." We hope that those items are going to be memorable for students as well. So, we're very excited about that. We also have some plans for students to pick up personal items at their schools. At the high school level, we've been doing that these last few weeks, allowing students to drive up and pick up things like scientific calculators and some other items that they're still using for the instructional programs that we have through the end of the school year, even though we're closed. Likewise, at the elementary level, we're working on plans for that, and families will hear from their principals in the next few weeks about picking up their children's personal items. I do want to tell you that step one of that program is for our teachers to come back into the building on their own, of course, honoring that social distancing, and distributing students' artwork to their classrooms so that we can stage that process of making sure our elementary students receive all that work that they've done, all those items that were placed on the walls for folks to enjoy while they were going through. So, there's still a lot of work to do with those logistical items, but most important for us is continuing to offer students instructional support so that they can stay engaged these next few weeks. And I tell you, there's been a lot of talk about, "Are we going to fall behind?" I tell you, one of the things that's been so great for me to see is the wonderful content that our professionals have put together and the work that our teachers have done as we continue to evolve to find ways to serve students and make sure we can convey that content well. I think it's going to continue to improve over these next few weeks. And the final thing we talked about in our work session was the importance of taking this time where every school system in the nation and probably across the world is creating an online or remote program with very little pre-planning because of the way COVID-19 hit, but with a strategic plan to be prepared for the possibility that something similar happens in the future. So, I've been really proud of our staff and already thinking strategically so that what we're doing now is a precursor to our being able to hit this with a lot of vigor and do our best to have very few hiccups in the event this happens again in the fall or any time in the future. So, that's one good that I hope comes out of this as we find ways to finish this up. So, I want to thank you all as board members for being engaged. I want to thank parents for being engaged as we're going through that process. So, with that, that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Board members, have any questions for Mr. Golden? Okay. Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you. I just want to say I've really appreciated the senior spotlights that I've seen out on social media that some of the schools are doing. I think I've seen parents get excited about that, and so just a thank you to the principals and the guidance counselors, whoever was involved in making sure that those happen because that's a lot of work to be able to do for each of those schools. So, just, I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus. And we have a lot of information, a lot of neat presentations out on social media. Carol Burtson, our communications director, gave me some statistics on that. I can't rattle them all off. She would say Blank Event got 7,000 views on down the line. So, our folks are ready, to your point, doing a lot of good celebrations with our student successes.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that information. I know really we're focusing kind of on looking forward instead of looking back and what's happened prior to it and really putting our efforts into what are the next steps and the plans and how do we take care of our kids when we come back in the graduation and so forth. But just to loop everything up, I thought you had a great response to a parent communication today, kind of asking about what other districts were doing and kind of making that comparison to Williamson County schools. I don't know, it's apples to oranges when you look at public private schools. They don't have the same populations that we do, as well as it's apples to oranges to outside of the state, just that some made the decision much quicker than Tennessee did in order to shut down, and that gives them freedom, whereas we're waiting for the state board. But in terms of county schools compared to Williamson County, just across the state, can you speak to that a little bit? There seems to be sort of this rumor going around that other counties reacted quicker or were doing online education before we were. And I've been looking as I hear these rumors and trying to find, well, who is doing it what, and I haven't had any luck, but I know you're in a position, speaking with other superintendents and benchmarking and sharing information to be able to speak to that. So, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. Again, you know, more important to look forward than backwards, but I think that would be helpful to, you know, put some of those rumors to rest, if you would.
Well, sure. And I've had a lot of conversations with neighboring superintendents. We've also done a lot of study with what's going on across the country with different examples. We even have a benchmarking group with similarly situated districts across the middle states of the United States, and we've been doing some benchmarking off them. So, it is true that a number of districts jumped almost immediately and doing some online programs, which, you know, might include an example of a teacher doing a Zoom lesson, et cetera. And we've seen good and bad out of that. We were careful to make sure that we went through the process of evaluating those programs to make sure we did them the right way, to make sure we were instructionally sound in what we did. And as I told you, we do have those programs up and running. And so, from a comparison standpoint locally, like you mentioned, Mr. Welch, I've seen some examples of some good things folks are doing, but I tell you, I haven't seen any content, number one, better than what we've provided our students. And I think that's in keeping with what we, as a school district, are committed to. And one of the stories that I've heard from some of our peers is they've gotten complaints similar to what we've received along the lines of, "Well, Blank Teacher did a Zoom event, but my teacher didn't. And I want to make sure that I get what someone else's teacher gave." And the reality is, that's what you're going to see in a lot of places, especially in Tennessee. There are some other states that might have forced the issue more aggressively. I've seen states that have actually required grading. And of course, you know that Tennessee has set a baseline grade with students' ability to improve their grade beyond that. But locally, we, as districts across the state, have engaged in a pretty substantial mix of remote learning. Many of our school districts, neighboring school districts, have done elementary packets similar to us. One of the things I've learned is especially at the elementary level, the engagement online has not been nearly as robust as classroom teaching for obvious reasons, because classroom teaching is what we're about. So, there's been a curve for all school districts in Tennessee in building up that, especially at the elementary level. We've learned from our peers some good things, and I think we've taught some of our peers some things as well. One example I mentioned in what you're talking about is structure for the information that we provide. At the elementary level, when we provided the robust content, we added weekly newsletters from each grade level with daily recommendations for items to work on. We've learned from some of our family districts and, you know, neighboring Tennessee districts that it might do some parents some good to give specific examples of things to work on rather than general, and so we've learned from that. Likewise, again, we've had a number of other districts and even private schools look at our content online, and I know that some folks have borrowed some of our content. So, it's really been a team effort across the state for all school districts as we're going through this to brainstorm off each other and find ways to improve. And I'll tell you, we've got opportunities to improve. No one has a monopoly on good ideas here, and that's one of the things we've learned from our parents as well. They've been able to share with us some good ideas as we continue to grow. A lot of those stories you hear about what's going on outside the district are myths because the stories kind of cycle, and you mentioned you have a hard time finding some of that online. We've read some stories about some high-performing districts in other parts of the country that have really struggled because they jumped into online and they hit a lot of problems. And so, as we're going through this, I'm really proud of our folks for spending the time to grow it and make sure we do it the right way, recognizing that with 41,000 students and their parents, there are going to be some folks who are frustrated, but who can give us some good constructive criticism on all sides of what we can do to serve them.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Eric?
No. Other than, it sounds like we need to watermark that content from now on so they can't... Or at least with that...
Ms. Garrett, you're up next.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I've talked to a lot of parents over the past four weeks, and what I have found in most of those conversations is that parents were not aware of some of the resources that were out there, or parents didn't realize that we're continuing to improve and push out additional materials and the additional ability for teachers to use technology. So, for the public that may be watching this meeting, I just want to say, please continue to connect with us. We can point you in the right directions for information. We want to hear from you, and if this is a concern to you, please reach out because we know how pressed you are for time right now, and we know you want to get things back on course and set things right. So, that's one thing that I want to say. The other thing I want to say is that I hope, as time permits, that staff will do what we call a project, a project follow-up, or some companies call them project postmortem about the COVID-19 rollout. What went well? What didn't go well? And how we can implement these things so that they're in our toolkit in the future. I think that's a really important thing to do once we can take a breath and step away from this crisis time.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. That last is a really good suggestion, and we've been talking about that. And on your first point, I do want to mention that one of the focus areas we've talked to principals and teachers about is this is an opportunity for our teachers to give maybe even some more personal, one-on-one support for students than they might typically have during those short classroom periods where every minute is consumed with direct instruction of the entire school. We do a lot of differentiation in our classes, but we've asked for that focus. So, I do want to encourage parents also, reach out to your teacher. Teachers are reaching out to our families and to our students as well. If you hit a snag, I reach out to the principal. I will tell you, like everybody else, every teacher's life is being impacted differently from COVID-19. And there's some who have family issues, and so we want to be cognizant of that, just like those of you who are working, see that with some of your coworkers. We need to make sure that we're responsive to our teachers as well, and so the capacity based on what's going on in their homes may be a little bit different. So, we do encourage, and we... So we do encourage, and we have been encouraging our principals to make sure that that personal contact is there, even for those teachers who might be ill on a particular day or unable to connect as much as some others.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Golden? Okay, I see none. The next item is the board chairman's report, and there was two things I wanted to say. One is, I've appreciated the continued rollout of the instructional and learning opportunities. As long as we continue with that, it's kind of like a snowball going downhill. I see it getting bigger and bigger, more and more involved, and I really appreciate seeing that. And what a lot of people don't realize unless you're in the middle of it is, all the work that goes on behind the scenes to pull this together, from the administration, the teachers, the tech department, communications department, the support teams, it's tremendous amount of work because you're not in your normal culture. You are doing things differently. I just want to make sure people knew that there's so much going on that is not seen by the general public or by anyone on the outside to know, that the staff really is working hard to get this materials together and out there, and I'm very appreciative of all that goes on behind the scenes, and I hope everybody else understands that stuff is happening all the time in our district, and it always is in Williamson. So does anyone have any comments or questions for me? You're all too kind. Thank you. Next item is unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business, so we'll move into new business. The first one is 2020-2021 facilities use fee schedule. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is on our annual agenda. It's our community use of school facilities procedure that follows behind our policy. And what I told you with the work session is, this is not the year to increase our fees. I know that community groups can't at this time use our facilities because of the social distancing restrictions, but we recommend the exact same fee schedule for next year that we have in this year.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion on the proposed facility use fee schedule? Mr. Cash? Is that, your hand raised? Is that your motion?
I will second Dan's motion.
All right, thank you. We have a... Dan, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a question from Ms. Durham.
Thank you, Gary. I just wanted to ask, for the folks who have facility use agreements that are in place right now, are they being charged while we're shut down for their monthly lease fees, if they have any, or how's that being handled?
That's a great question. No, we are not charging anyone for that, and I will tell you also, we're not at a decision-making point yet, but one of the things that we're talking about is, for some of those annual leases, do we ask at some point for you all to improve extensions based on the policy, depending on how many months the community is not able to use that? And so I just wanted to let you all know to anticipate that we may be bringing this to you in a few months, based on whatever our community users' needs may be.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So my question is, are we still taking applications if somebody wants to submit a facility use application for after the quarantine is complete?
That's another good question, Mr. Mitchell. Yes, they can still submit them. We don't have a commitment date yet where we can say, yes, you can start using it by blank date, but certainly anyone can get the online application and fill that out if they have a need, with that one caveat, that we don't have a start-back date yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. If we could go ahead and call the roll, please, Ms. Hagan.
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Dan? Elliot? Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you, board. Next item is superintendent's tenure recommendations to the board. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our tenure recommendation that's on our annual agenda, actually, for teachers who completed the requirements in the previous year, and that's based on the test results coming in. So these are the teachers who have continued to work with us, and we recommend that you approve this tenure recommendation for these teachers largely who are in their sixth year.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion on the tenure recommendations? Mr. Wimberly's hand was up first, Ms. Garrett's, no, Ms. Durham's hand is up second. Okay? So we have a motion. Mr. Wimberly, that was a motion, correct?
Okay, I move to approve.
Thank you, and I saw Ms. Durham's hand up next. That was second. Okay, Mr. Wimberly, did you want to speak to this further? Okay.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the tenure recommendations? Okay, I see none, and Ms. Hagan, if you'd go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitch?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you, board. Our next item is under new business, high school 2019-2020 graduation window. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the item that I mentioned during my superintendent's report, based on the services received from parents, knowing that it's extremely unlikely we could actually have a physical graduation in May based on the restrictions. We're asking the board to approve the change to the school calendar, which would extend the graduation window to July 31st to give us some flexibility to do some scheduling for a physical graduation, and I recommend approval.
Okay, we have the director's recommendation. Anyone like to make a motion for this? We have a motion from Ms. Garrett, and we have a second from, it looks like Ms. Durham. Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Garrett, did you want to speak to it anymore? No? Okay, anybody else like to comment on this one? Okay, I see none. Ms. Hagan, if you'd call the roll, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is the resolution by the Williamson County Board of Education to suspend board policies impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know from the work session and from the news reports, there have been some substantial changes at the state level. Number one, the state legislature passed some laws to address schools and the COVID-19 pandemic. Likewise, the State Board of Education changed its rules, and I mentioned one of those earlier about students' grades being no lower than the date at which the governor asked schools to close back in March, along with some substantial changes to the graduation requirements, attendance requirements, and some other grading issues. And what we have before you is a resolution to approve a suspension of board policies that currently conflict with the state guidance we've received related to all those instructional issues to make sure that we close out this school year properly, based on what our state legislature has done and what our State Board of Education has done. I do want to thank specifically the Tennessee School Boards Association, the TSBA. They actually sent out to all local school systems and board members a draft format with some good language that addresses some of the financial issues that need to be addressed by the board, and those financial issue paragraphs are in the tail end of this resolution. We've added in, the policies that we've determined are impacted by the changes in both state law and the State Board of Education rules and regs, and we ask for your approval so that we can comply with our new normal, at least for this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Anyone like to make a motion on this one? I see Mr. Fiskus's hand up. Anyone like to second that?
Okay.
Second from Mr. Welch. Any further discussion on this one? Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that we're going to refer all these policies to the Policy Committee, just by our board norms, right? I know we'll probably take a look at a couple of them. Obviously, this is a super extraordinary circumstance, but I just want to make sure that we are going to do that.
That's a good suggestion. We'll make sure we do. I have had some one-on-one conversations with some of you about questions that this has triggered, you actually thinking about, what do we do long-term with some of these policies? So we'll make sure we do that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fiskus?
Yeah, just a clerical error that I saw on page two, policy, or number five, A, completion of teacher evaluations is not required. On my copy, it says 2029 to 2020 school year, so we want to make that change to 2019.
Thank you very much for catching that.
Yeah, so, but that was it. But I agree with Mr. Galbraith. I think we can refer these over to the Policy Committee to look at for the future. It'll be good.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Yes, and maybe this will be covered by the referral to the Policy Committee, but one of the things we're waiving is picking the valedictorian and salutatorian as part of graduation. I recall you saying that we still want to have that. Do you have an idea of how we would be picking those individuals with the waiving of policy, or is that something that would need to go back to the Policy Committee and be decided at a later date?
Well, for this year, for our current seniors, there are a number of requirements in the policy, and we had a concern about two of those requirements for what's gone on this spring, this fourth quarter. One was community service. One of the requirements is there must be at least 20 hours of community service above and beyond any other organization's requirements, and we know that some of our seniors actually already had some community service programs planned that were circumvented by the stay-at-home order, either from the municipalities or the governor. And so that's one that we're asking you to waive. The second concern we had was that we require every AP exam that a student can or could take actually be taken in order to qualify for valedictorian and salutatorian, and we know that this is a time where it may not be possible for every student to take every single AP exam. So we're asking for this semester's exams to be exempt, students to be exempt exclusively for this semester. So beyond that, I do know I've heard from a couple of board members who really want to spend some time talking about this part of the policy long-term, but short-term, those waivers are related to those two items.
Okay, any follow-ups, Mr. Welch? Okay, all right. Mr. Galbraith, did you have another question, or did you just leave your hand up? Okay, hands down. Anyone else have a question on this resolution? Okay, and let's go ahead then and do a roll call vote. Ms. Hagan, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Golden, any final words since that's the last item on our agenda?
No, sir. Thank you.
No, then I just want to thank everybody for your flexibility and patience as we work, continue to work through this situation. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our agenda for this evening, therefore, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.